Alright, we're going live right now so they can start getting the stuff set up.
Can you just let me know when you see it on 191, Andrea?
Yeah, he's... He's doing it now. We're on.
Don't see any other planning commissioners waiting. Is Dave gonna be at this meeting?
I just talked to Dave because I was having trouble getting in, so I'm surprised he's not on.
I spoke to him within the last hour as well, so...
For anyone new coming on, we're live on Channel 1, 191, right now. So while we're waiting for the next planning commissioners, and Dave.
Did Wayne get his phone or computer issues worked out?
It doesn't look like it.
Joy, you're really wavy. I don't know why.
Alright, hopefully that won't happen again, but sometimes it does go out and I just have to unplug my USB and plug it back in, so be patient if that happens.
So Dave is having technical issues and he stated he will be on in a couple of minutes here.
Okay.
There's only one planning commissioner that I know of that said they were going to be absent.
Who's that?
Eric Brooks. So one... So we're still... One more planning commissioner should be. There it is. Hello?
Hello?
So we're just waiting for Dave now? Nice background, Tony. Very regal.
It's the Marquette Courthouse.
Very nice.
For those of you just joining us, we are already streaming live.
Did Dave say what his issues were?
Uh, yeah, sorry. He's having issues of it's not working at all. So he said to start without him. Sorry, so I had to get some stuff ready to do so. Okay.
Somebody get started?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, calling to order the Marquette City Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 19th. Let's start with roll call. I'll call your name and you can just say here, just so we have some kind of order. So I'm Joy Cordillo. Michael Larson?
Here.
Michael Dunn?
Here.
Antonio Ruiz?
Here.
Sarah Middlefeld?
Here.
Aaron Andrus?
Present.
Jessica Coes? Jessica Coes? Can you hear us, Jessica? Jessica, do you have audio? Jessica? Jessica, can you hear us? Jessica Coes?
No.
Can you hear us, Jessica?
I can't hear anything.
Uh, can somebody else say something to see if it's just me or if...
I'm just trying to begin because I can't hear anything.
Jesse, can you hear me?
So I guess let's put a pause on it then.
A pause on roll call?
We're running the rest of the meeting so she's at, so she can be here.
Okay.
It seemed like she might be listening to the delayed streaming. On YouTube or channel, whichever.
Can you hear us, Jessica?
I can, thanks.
Uh, Jessica Coes, we're doing roll call.
Yeah, here, yes.
Uh, Wayne Primo? Wayne, can you hear us?
Wayne's audio isn't enabled. I don't know what's going on with him.
Does somebody want to give him a call?
I can. Yeah, I'll give him a call.
Did I miss anybody else or did I get everybody? I got everybody, right? Besides Wayne?
Yes.
I did, okay.
Boy, today is the day for technical difficulties.
What would we do without technology?
Okay.
Wayne?
Didn't know that it was me. What'd she say?
Hi Wayne, can you hear me? This is Joy.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, I'm just doing roll calls, so Wayne Primo, you just want to say here.
Okay.
Okay, so we got everybody, right Andrea?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, moving on to approval of the agenda, does anybody have any comments or changes to the agenda?
Uh, Dave has an addition for the 1090 South Front Street regarding some M dot comments.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Anybody else have any agenda issues? Then if somebody wants to make a motion to approve with the additional...
Make a motion to approve the agenda with amendments?
Michael Larson, do we have a second?
I second. Aaron Andrus?
Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please turn off mute when you...
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes. Um... Did everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes? Are there any comments or changes to the minutes?
Yeah, I had a comment on the notes where it had the motion that I made that failed. Being that it failed, I don't know that it matters, but there was the... I think it was indicated it was... E... I think it was 2B and it made it sound like it was part 2B, but that was under subsection E. And that the subsection E wasn't included, so it kind of got mixed up.
Okay, so the technical specification of the code within the motion?
Yeah, the portions of the code that I cited, and again, I don't know that it matters at this point since it failed, but for whatever it's worth, I thought I'd just put that out there.
Okay. Andrea, are you gonna record? Do you want to record that?
Yep, I got it.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Dunn. Anybody else have any comments about the minutes? Uh, so by consent, I think we can approve the minutes with the changes as identified by Commissioner Dunn. Um, and that was the minutes of 4:21 and 5:05, I just want to point that out. Um, okay, moving on, conflict of interest. Is there anybody that would like to declare conflict of interest at this time? Okay, see, oh, there is none. Oh, it looks like we've got Dave. Let's give him a second. Dave, can you hear us?
If he can, he's muted.
Yep. We can't see him either. Should I continue or...
Hey Dave, can you hear us?
Dave? Do you want to reach out to him Andrea, or do you want me to carry on?
Yeah, let's just go.
Okay, um, starting with item number one, public hearing 09 SUP 05 2020, 1090 South Front Street recreational marijuana retailer.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen here. Alright, staff has reviewed the special land use permit for marijuana retailer located at 1090 South Front Street. Attached to the agenda packet was the staff file review and analysis, which included the sections of the code that the planning commission has to review to see compliance, the special land use permit application, their narrative responses, the marijuana prequalification letter, the site plan review application, lease agreements, staff comments, the response to staff comments, the area map, the parcels outlined in blue, the block map, the parcels outlined in blue, photos of the site, and the site plan. Uh, prior to the agenda posting, we did not receive correspondence, but we did receive correspondence yesterday. So I'll go ahead and read that into the record. Attention Marquette Planning Commissioners, regarding a special land use permit application for 1090 South Front Street. Both the special land use permit application and the site plan review application for 1090 South Front Street indicate that the land used to the immediate north of the subject property is farmer-used market. Granted, this information was accurate as of the date of the application. As the commission clearly understands, however, the land used to the immediate north is changing. Fresh Coast Provisioning received an unanimous approval for special land use permit application at 100 Genesee Street on 5520. Thus, the land use conditions are in flux and the information presented may not be sufficient to render an informed decision on the relative... relevant standards. Now, I'm no city planner, but as I understand it, the zoning enabling act grants a planning commission discretionary decision-making authority pertaining to special use permits. The standards for the Marquette are clearly outlined in the land development code. Given the changing district conditions, can the planning commission reasonably confirm that the proposed use for the subject property, one, is in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district, two, is compatible and not in conflict with adjacent or surrounding properties and uses, three, fosters well-matched economic relationships amongst neighboring properties and uses, or conversely, does it create discord between neighboring properties resulting in deleterious impacts to businesses and property owners? Four, does not impact additional neighborhood factors such as undue concentration of similar uses becoming a dominant feature of the district? I'd argue that none of these questions can be reasonably answered with the information presently available. Further, both the LDC and the city master plan encourage the planning commission to consider not just land uses conditions as precedentally constituted, but likely, conditions and outcomes in the future as well. That is the ultimate goal of city planning after all. City Commissioner Campana said, "Marquette is not going to be a free-for-all city." The special land use process and the buffering between systems and land uses were put in place as safeguards to ensure appropriate development of this new use. Given the nature of how the city regulates other age-restricted uses in tandem with this commission's obligation towards orderly and measured development, a denial of the use permit seems prudent and easily justifiable. Thank you, Nick Piedmont, Fresh Coast Provisioning LLC, 101 M 66, North Charlemagne, Michigan, 49770. And then... Dave, are you on? Okay, so he gave me this and the M dot is discussing access management regarding the curb cuts, the two curb cuts here. So that's gonna be something that M dot will be discussing, so...
Are they here and they're gonna speak on that behalf?
No, things that are on their corridor goes to the corridor of traffic management group. Um, so that's just what he was going to speak to.
Okay, so we don't quite know exactly how this relates to our...
Yeah, maybe depending on what your motion is that they would have to meet M dot requirement.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay. Um, do you want to bring in our applicant?
That's it for me.
Okay.
Hey Myron, you're gonna want to turn down the... The YouTube. Do you have anyone else here to speak as an applicant?
You're muted as well.
Mr. Barry, you're on mute. You need to take yourself off mute.
Okay, yes. Yes. Mike, the lawyer for Lawrence, is also...
Bahora? Mike Bahora?
Oh, I see, gotcha. Yeah. Yeah, Mike Warren. Okay. Trying to get to the YouTube. Okay, I'm on YouTube now.
Did you say Mike Bahora?
Yeah.
Alright. Anyone else?
No, we're the only two that are here.
Okay.
Uh, okay, Mr. Barry, Mr. Bahora, you can speak on behalf of your application at this time.
Okay, well, the two things I hear coming up that are concerned to the board, the first one is the fact that the people across the street from us have also applied for such a permit. And of course, they don't want competition. They're saying they don't like competition. When we found out back a month ago that they had actually applied, I did check with the city and I was assured there's nothing in the city rules and regulations that said we couldn't have two facilities across the street from each other. And therefore, we have proceeded in good faith, believing we would be able to have a facility permitted within the city of Marquette. And the second point, the access management. DO2 wants to approach us on that. It's certainly something we can work around. The, while we prefer to have the access off of Front Street, it isn't something that is vital to our business. We can, we'd still have a traffic flow without it. So, um, I would, I would argue that at this point it's a non-point, because if it's something we have to deal with, we deal with it. Obviously, if we have to deal with that, then we're also gonna have to deal with changing our landscape plan, because then we would have that area to landscape as well. But again, those are things we've been trying to work with the city on. So I don't see either one of those as being a issue for not allowing this permit to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
If I could just speak briefly, if that's okay?
Go ahead, Mr. Bahora.
Uh, my name is Mike Bahora. I'm an attorney for Laird Investments, who's the applicant in this. And I'll leave the technical stuff to Myron, but I did have a chance to review the ordinance as far as I could see, and I may be wrong, but I'll echo what Myron said. There isn't anything in the ordinance that has specific separation or buffering requirements in between facilities, as is the case in some other municipalities, and sometimes not the case, so... Although, I guess I don't blame Fresh Coast for trying to say that they don't want to have another facility right across the street. I can appreciate where they're coming from, but you know, I don't think there's any, anybody's best interests are served by eliminating healthy and free-market competition. You know, there's, I suspect, not only in Marquette, but in probably across the state and across the country, and that there's gonna be plenty of vacant buildings coming up after this thing, as retail businesses are not really, you know, are a little uncertain as far as new businesses, but the marijuana industry is, is, is growing and it's thriving. So, you know, hopefully, the Marquette will be able to take advantage of this and look at this as an opportunity to fill up at least one vacant building and, you know, so, you know, I just wanted to kind of counter what they said, but if there's any specific questions on the operation or the layout of the facility, the cannabis side of it, I'm happy to answer any of those questions. Any of the technical engineering or architectural stuff, I'll leave to Myron. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Bahora. Do you have any questions? Tony, did I see right? Tony, Mr. Ruiz, go ahead.
Yes, in terms of timeframe, what are you looking at in terms of becoming operational?
So, assuming we were get approval and we could get permits, usually it's anywhere from 90 to 120 days after we have building permits. Uh, you know, candidly, there are some backups with some of the contractors, as they're trying to finish up some of their previous projects that kind of got put on hold with this, but we just got, for the same applicant, we're moving forward on a project in Madison Heights. It got delayed a couple of weeks, so, you know, I think, I think 120 days is safe, but our goal is 90 days to be operational. Once construction's done, we submit our, we request inspections from the MRA and they come out and do their thing. That's usually, you know, a week or two process by the time we get it scheduled and have them come out. And so I think 90 to 120 days is a fair estimate.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
Uh, I think, uh, sorry if I, if I get your name wrong, but...
Mike, Mr. Bahora?
Mike?
Tommy, Mike?
Yeah. Thanks. Um, so, I'm wondering about the licensing and the different steps, the code, our code, it's just a language thing. Our code calls for a provisional license, but then the letter refers to being pre-qualified. Can you explain to me, is there any other step in between being pre-qualified and then actually obtaining the license?
No, so the way that it works, the only people that could obtain a prequalification for adult use, which is what this application is for, is that you have to have a medical, operating medical facility. And those people are kind of fast-tracked, and Laird Investments has, has an operating medical facility in the city of Warren for cultivation. And so they were able to get prequalification relatively quickly. The only next step, this is the state basically says, okay, you, you're pre-qualified, and now just tell us where, when you find a place to set up shop, and we submit the necessary documents that are site-specific to Marquette, the building insurance, And now just tell us where, when you find a place to set up shop and we submit the necessary documents that are site-specific to Marquette, the building insurance, uh, letter from you guys saying, hey, we're allowed to be here and we're not just doing this in the dark of night kind of thing. And we submit all that documents, we request inspections, they come out, make sure our cameras are in place, all the security stuff is in order, and then, they send us a invoice for forty-four thousand dollars. We go pay that and then we, we have, we have one year, uh, and then we have to renew it every year, obviously.
Okay. Great, thank you. Um, another question is the, uh, the fan size, uh, determined by the cubic feet of the building. Um, in our code, it, it, it does say the, the cubic feet of the, of the building. Um, but then in the application, it looked like it was based on the, uh, the retail sales square footage. Can, can you explain to me why, why it was done that way?
Um, I'm not sure. That's a question for me or Myron. If it, if it was, it perhaps was an oversight. Um, I, I, I don't know. We're happy to, of course, to make sure there's, um, you can make that a condition. If that's, if that's an issue, we're happy to change the fan size. I don't think that's a big issue.
Okay. Um, oh, one more. Um, the temporary loading area? What, there was a request to, to have a, have the loading area like a, a, a temporary loading area allowed? I was just, I wasn't clear on, on that.
Temp, temporary loading area?
Yes.
It, it's something that, um, your, um, code allows and all it means is that it's an area where people stop, drop stuff and leave right away. So it's not like, we're not gonna have semis coming and parking for hours at a time.
Okay, so the, the loading area isn't, isn't changing over time. You're, you're always gonna be using the same, the same area, but it's just, it, it's used on a temporary basis.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not like Kroger or Meyer, or you know, where you're gonna have delivery trucks, you know, deliveries are not very frequent, um, and they're, so I think temporary is more like, uh, not temporary as far as on the site, but temporary isn't, we, we won't be using it that much. Just because the nature of the deliveries is not as frequent as some other retailers.
Understood. Thank you.
Sure.
I just want to clarify something. So, Mr. Barry, are you gonna be the actual operator of, of the establishment? What is your role?
No, our role is engineer, architect, designer.
Okay. And so who, and Mr. Bahora, you're not either?
No, he won't be either. He, he's.
I'm not the oper, I'm not the operator, but, uh, they, they have, uh, multiple facilities and they have a team. I don't know if there's been a person specifically designated for Marquette just yet. We'll probably be looking, uh, uh, higher locally, to be honest. Laird Investments is based down in, uh, Oakland County, down here in Metro Detroit. So, um, as we've done, as we're doing in Alma and, uh, Madison Heights and some other cities, we, we, we probably will look, at least, um, initially, we'll have a, uh, our team from one of our operating facilities down here go up to Marquette to train, but, but I, um, I think probably ninety-five or a hundred percent of the, the employees, including management, will be local, um, local residents there. That's, that's our goal anyways. That's our hope.
Uh, Commissioner Ruiz?
I, I know this sounds a little bit weird, but Mr. Bahora, is it your, the, your entity then that will actually be, be licensed and running the facility?
So let me, let me just clarify. It's not my entity. I'm an attorney and I represent Laird Investments. Um, but, yeah. Yeah, but I, I say we because it's a client, but the candidly, it's also a, a relative. So we, we have other sites that we're, we're, we do together. I actually own a dispensary and I'm, I, uh, I help manage that and it's, that's in LaPierre, which is just north of Detroit, you know, just north, in the northern hour, uh, about forty minutes, uh, hour away, north of Detroit. So, um, I'm very familiar with the business, not just on the legal side, but I'm also, you know, active in the space. And so I'm, I'm very comfortable answering these questions as I, as I have some joint, uh, ventures and, and other, other facilities with Laird Investments. So, um, it's not me per se, but, um, um, that they will, uh, Laird Investments is owned by a gentleman named Ivan Amore. He specifically asked, do I think I need to be there? I said, no, I got, I, I got it. I'll answer the question. So, but if, if, if I, if you need him, I can certainly get him on the phone and get him on a call, on the Zoom call if you need him.
No, no, the only, the only can, the only question that I had was is that, that, well, this wasn't, uh, you're looking at holding the property for long term. Your client's looking to hold the property for long term then.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, certainly. Yeah, we, 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 we are already operational. Uh, that's how we were able to get a recreational license. So we have no intent to, to do anything other than operate in Marquette and, um, uh, we think it's, it's gonna be a fantastic market for adult use. We're hopeful anyways.
Um, one more question for me. Um, what, there was a comment from the arborist regarding the, um, landscaping, um, and it was indicated that you were gonna be adding a, uh, an area for planting and is that indicated on the plans or do we know where that's gonna be? Maybe I missed it.
It's, 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 it's not, um, it's not showing on the plans right now.
We're asking it for it to be on the revised set of plans. It was staff comments to the initial set.
Right.
I'm just asking, where is the, is it?
But it's gonna be over on the west side. There'd be a, uh, ten by fifty or ten by sixty area set aside over on the west side. There's a twenty-foot strip of, um, parking lot to the west of the building there. And we're gonna put our, uh, um, in parking lot, planting in that strip.
Okay.
Understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just looking at all the plans. Do any of our other commissioners have any questions? Mr. Census.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Sorry about the long delay because I, uh, had network access issues over here. Um, I'm gonna shut my feed off for this. Um, is it echoing?
No.
My volume echoing? Okay. I wanted to clarify a couple of things. That document that was added to the agenda about the frontage on Front Street, the M dot concern is, um, the M dot concern is, uh, related to one of the curb cuts. They're, they asked if, uh, the city would be amenable to actually getting rid of the Genesee Street curb cut. And I'm not sure that the person who asked this question is familiar with the property, but, uh, obviously that's access to um, cows as well. Or McCabe's. So that's really not a good option, but the Front Street access is sort of a hazard, I think, in, in the way, then maybe the solution there might be to make that a act, exit-only access point. But we'll see what they recommend. It's their right of way. So ultimately, if they want something there, their applicants are gonna have to comply with that. The other thing is the landscaping on that side, the arborist is, or the M dot has said that they're not really, uh, up for street trees. There's probably not enough room and there's plantings already in the corridor seasonally. So I'm not sure that, uh, any street trees are possible over there. I don't know if you guys already had talked about that or not. I missed that. That's all I had.
Thank you, Dave. Well, we, we did talk about the, there's an additional plot that was requested by the arborist that they're, they're gonna add for planting. Um, okay. Any other comments or questions for our applicants? In that case, um, gentlemen, you can go on mute, um, as we sort of discuss amongst ourselves.
A public hearing.
Um, okay, and so we already read the only bit of correspondence we have, correct, Andrea?
Correct.
Okay, so let's move on to public testimony.
Okay, wait a minute. That one is not right. So I don't know if they're here for this case or not. So we're gonna have to just ask them.
Okay.
If it's a phone number.
Hello, um, seven zero eight two eight nine nine two five seven two. Can you hear me? Hello? We have somebody on the phone in our meeting. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I'm on for another meeting.
Okay, we'll put you back.
Real quick, can you, uh, what's your name and what item are you here for?
Um, Arthur Chavez in the Verizon Tower.
Hi, um, we have somebody on the phone. Are you here for the, um, Front Street recreational marijuana retailer SLU? Hello, we have somebody on the phone. Can you hear me?
Hello, yes, I can hear you.
Hi, are you here for the Front Street recreational marijuana retailer application?
I am not. I am here for the cell tower.
Okay, what's your name?
Aaron Valley.
Okay, we'll bring you back in when it's time for that item.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Andrea, we can't hear you.
Do you see any more, Sean? I'm not seeing any other phone numbers.
I, I don't see any other phone numbers. Um, so I don't know if you know any of the people who are waiting, if they're trying to get in for this or another item.
I think they're all for the other items.
Okay. Yeah, if you think they're good, then I don't see anybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay. Um, okay, that closes our public testimony. So, uh, we can move on to commission discussion. Um, if anybody wants to suspend the rules, now would be the time.
I'd motion to suspend the rules.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Dunn, uh, all in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, Commissioner Ruiz, you wanna start us out?
Yeah, I mean, we just, uh, uh, approved Fresh Coast last week. Um, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Bahora there. Uh, competition is good. Um, it'll drive prices down, it'll, um, you know, create less of monopolies. Uh, if anything, maybe, maybe it'll be a boom to the south side. Um, you know, I, if, if, if the, um, land development code doesn't have any type of buffering that's, uh, inherent right now, I don't see any reason to rely on that, uh, or, or any other argument, um, pertaining to overcrowding to preclude them from the area.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, Middlefield?
Yeah, I'm just to kind of echo what Tony said. I think there's nothing in the land development code that has any buffer, so there's no, unfortunately for the Fresh Coast guys, there's no teeth to that argument. I think we, if we approve the last one, we have to approve this one and maybe buffering is something we look at down the road, but I don't think there's any discussion, you know, really for this one, it seems like.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I feel like, to me, the thing I keep going back to is the city commission was very clear that they didn't want to put a cap on number or proximity. Um, and, you know, when we made this code, we set out the districts that was allowable. So I, I don't, I don't see on what grounds we would use to, to not approve this, based on that argument. Commissioner Dunn?
I've got a question for Andrea or Dave. Um, did, did you guys notice what I noticed about the, the square footage calculations for the, for the fan? And i- am I, am I looking at it right? The, the the land use code says that the, the cubic feet per minute should be based on the cubic feet of the building. But then the, the calculations from the applicant were based on the, the square footage of retail space.
I did not, I did not pick up on that.
And it's, you know, I don't know much about fans, but as far as the, the cubic feet per minute, it was pretty substantial.
Uh, yeah, so then when you asked them the question, they said they would meet the requirements?
Yeah, it didn't sound like it was a problem.
We can put that in as a condition. It's a good catch and, um, just tie it to the square footage of the building. Cause I mean, yeah, especially if some of that's gonna be storage, we know that could additionally have smell issues.
Yep.
I believe that issue was raised with, uh, by one of the other, um, retail marijuana shop owners in the area at one of the final hearings, um, on the zoning or or aft, it was actually was after the, the code was approved and made a comment that the, uh, standard for the whole building was probably, uh, extreme overkill. So that is something we may need to look at adjusting with the code text in the future.
Agreed.
Commissioner Ruiz?
I had one more if I can.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Dunn, please continue.
So in regard to the M dot, kind of, I'm kind of combining two things, but with the, the M dot access point and the curb cut and then also the landscaping along that side, do, I mean, do we need to put any kind of condition in there or is that sort of automatically that, that they're going to have to work with? You know, the city arborist and M dot kind of go and, I guess, depending on the timing. Can you explain to me how that works or do, I, I'm trying to decide whether we need a condition for that or if that's
Right, so, just when you, if, like, we're asked for a revised plan to meet staff comments and I would just add, and M dot's comments.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it would be good to address that, just saying generally that, um, to work with the city and M dot on the access, uh, recommendations for Front Street.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Do you have any other commissioners that want to speak to this? Commissioner Ruiz, sorry, yeah.
I, I was gonna make a motion.
Go for it.
After review of the site plan set dated April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, uh, with supplemental doc, documentation and the staff file review analysis for zero nine dash SUP dash zero five dash twenty, planning commission finds that the request does, um, or the, that the request meets the intent and requirements of the land development code sections fifty-four point one four zero three, fifty-four point one zero two and fifty-four point six two eight and hereby approves zero nine dash SUP dash zero five dash twenty with the following conditions, uh, that are revised, uh, amended plan uh, be submitted, uh, to meet staff comments and the comments of the, of M dot.
Do you want to add in the comment that Commissioner Dunn made about the square footage?
Well, I thought that was staff comment. Well, I guess, uh, and the can, and the condition that, that the exhaust, the, the fan system is, is up to code.
Uh, great. Do we have a second? Do you have that, Dave, first of all? You're on mute.
I have it.
You have it? Okay. Um, you have a second?
Yeah, second.
Commissioner Middlefelt, second. So I'll do a roll call vote, um, starting with, uh, Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Middlefield?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Andres?
Yes.
Commissioner Coz?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Primo?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so passes unanimously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, um, moving on to citizens wishing to address the commission on agenda items. Do we just have the people for the tower, and we can wait for that?
Yeah, is that, you just wanna bring them in at that point?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just figure that the rest of the, yeah.
Okay. Then moving on to old business, uh, zero four SUP zero four twenty twenty one zero zero nine, West Bluff Street, forty foot wireless facility tower, Andrea?
Here, Ms. Green. At the April twenty first, twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting, the following motion was made after a public hearing for requests for a special land use permit for a wireless communications tower facility, which was a forty foot high monopole tower and equipment platform located at one thousand nine West Bluff Street, was held. It was moved by A. Ruiz, seconded by E. Brooks, and carried unanimously, nine zero, to postpone this item to May nineteenth, twenty twenty, or a date subsequent that can, the applicant can be ready for, uh, to provide additional information regarding additional towers in the area that were not part of the list that was provided, information about how close the other towers in the area, and how close residences are to them, as well as information or an analysis as to the current capacity of other towers and the need for further towers such as this, based on sections fifty four, six, four, four dot A, four and five, of the land development code. So, the new attachments were additional correspondence, correspondences received May eleventh from M. Dawson, additional correspondence received five twelve from J. Remington, Hush Blackwell, and then the additional correspondences that were received after the agenda was posted for that April twenty first meeting, and, and was read into the record at that meeting, and in the April twenty first agenda case file.
Uh, is that it Andrea?
Yep.
There's nothing else to review, okay. Do, anybody have any questions for Andrea? Um, then let's bring in the applicant, do they wanna speak again, I'm assuming we have?
There's many of them, so give me a second here, I have to go through the list.
We have, there's many of them, so give me a second here, I have to go through the list.
Okay, I believe I've, uh, got everybody now.
Okay, um, gentlemen, please, uh, if you'd like to speak, I don't know how you wanna organize yourselves, but we're ready for you guys. We have Mr. Stewart, Mr. Chavez, Mr. Valley, Mr. Remington, and Mr. Seemoff.
I, I can begin, thank you Chair, um, this is Jake Remington, I'm with the law firm of Hush Blackwell, uh, our firm represents Verizon, um, we submitted a letter, as Ms. Lander's pointed out, uh, to the commission, it should be in your packets, I think we went through it, um, and I just, I'll assume you've had a chance to review it. I wanna specifically discuss what was conveyed, um, we have both, uh, Mr. Stewart here and Mr. Seemoff, uh, who is a Verizon radio frequency engineer, to address the questions posed by the commissioners at the meeting held last time. We've also included in my letter a photo sim of the proposed tower, I believe there were some questions about what it would look like, uh, from the street. There is a landscaping plan, I know that was raised by, uh, Commissioner Dunn and others, so we provided, well, a proposed landscaping plan, which Mr. Stewart will discuss a little further. Uh, there is a photo from, uh, two thousand eight, uh, of the approximately seventy foot, uh, communications tower that was there previously, um, and I, I believe, um, Mr. Stewart provided it, but, uh, we've also, uh, today, that is, we've also included a document that outlines his efforts to identify other sites, uh, within the area, uh, the search area provided by Verizon, so, um, I guess I will turn it to, uh, Mr. Seemoff and Mr. Stewart to, uh, just provide a little further discussion, either that, or I guess, uh, lob it to the, the commissioners to, um, address some of the questions that they had raised the last meeting.
Uh, if you guys have more that you wanna sort of present to us before we start asking you questions, I would, I would go ahead and do that, unless you guys want us to just start.
Sure, so maybe Mustafa, if you wanna, uh, speak, uh, from Verizon's standpoint as to the, um, generally how the cellular network works and, and why, um, this site is being proposed.
Sure, can everybody hear me fine?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um, hi, my name is Mustafa Simoff, I'm an RF engineer, radio frequency engineer for Verizon, uh, I've been an RF engineer for almost thirty years, um, uh, so I have pretty extensive background in, uh, in different, uh, technologies that have been deployed over the years. Um, traditionally, basically, uh, as you're all probably aware of, uh, we get our service out using cell sites, and, uh, yeah, the, the idea is that we're putting cell sites where, uh, we have a need. Um, and, uh, basically, what we do is we try to identify areas of concern, and, uh, those areas of concern can be performance related, such as, uh, areas of, uh, poor coverage, which lead to dropped calls, um, or they could be, uh, capacity issues, um, such as, uh, slow internet, choppy video, uh, when we talk about, uh, data throughput speeds, um, as is the case with Marquette Golf Club, as we're calling the site, um, this site is a capacity issue site, um, it's a site that, uh, uh, practically about, maybe even four or five years ago, we, we, uh, trended our data usage at that site, and we saw that, yeah, at some point, when we extrapolate into future use based on the growth, we anticipated this site was going to, the sites that are existing, we're going to experience some blocking, um, or some, uh, slow throughput speeds for data users. So based on that information, uh, we identify where the traffic is coming from in the geographical area. Uh, for example, for this, uh, golf club site, this site was determined based on traffic that was originating off of Marquette East, uh, in the commercial area, right around Washington Street, and along, uh, forty one on the highway there. Uh, we, uh, can see where the, uh, data usage is, uh, basically, generic, it's generically, uh, plotted out in bins, and based on that information, uh, we try to put the site where the traffic is. Um, so then what we'll do is, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, open up a search ring, and we'll give that to our site acquisition people, so they can take that search ring and see if they can find, first of all, an existing structure, which is what we're always trying to shoot for, um, A, because it's, it gets us faster, to, to market, if you will, in this situation, gets it up, uh, for our customers to use sooner, and it's also, uh, typically, uh, a more, uh, cost-effective way of, of deploying our system. So we're, we're always trying to find existing structures, uh, within the search ring that we give to our site act people. Um, at that point, uh, they will, uh, you know, our site act people will go out and try, uh, to locate some type of existing structure that we can use, if, uh, no existing structures are available, then we'll, we'll look at raw land as, as a fallback. You know, basically, you know, we're trying to find a, a location that, that meets the technical needs of, you know, it works for the community in terms of providing what they expect, uh, from Verizon, which is, uh, good throughput speeds uh, on our network. Um, the thing I'd like to make, uh, clear is that, you know, Verizon doesn't make money from building sites, um, you know, basically, we make money from subscriber base, and, uh, to build subscriber base, we have to have a comprehensive, good network everywhere, you know, that's what we strive for, our customers expect that from us, um, so, you know, the decision to add a, uh, new location is not taken lightly within Verizon, there's a, a lot of costs associated with it, and, uh, it's, it's definitely scrutinized very carefully within Verizon, how we spend money to put sites in areas to serve the public need. Um, so, you know, that's, that's basically what our intent is, and I just wanna make clear that this is not done frivolously, you know, we put a lot of effort and thought into where we put our, our sites, um, to make it as cost-effective and least impactful, um, you know, to the community in terms of, uh, where the site is placed. Um, I, I can let, uh, Guy speak more towards, you know, the challenges we've had for site acquisition for the specific site, um, unless you have specific questions, we, we can ask me now, or after Guy has, uh, spoke, I'll leave that up to.
I think we can let Mr. Stewart speak, and then we'll, we'll go through our questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so, our last hearing, I, I know that, there was some question about, um, the, um, you know, where we've looked and, you know, why that we ended up on this, with this site, so I, I do wanna just touch base on a couple of things, and I did bring up, or I did send, um, to, um, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you, um, us, uh, a map of the area that, that I focused on, and when, so when I'm given a site from Verizon to try to establish, and like Mustafa just said, the first thing is, we do really want to find an existing site, that's the quickest to market, easiest zoning, all sorts of things, it's just money, it, it just makes the most sense. So, when I first got this site, I did look at and spend a lot of time on the south side of forty one there, because that's a very, that's a very nice commercial, commercial area. Uh, when I first talked to zoning, this goes back several years ago now, um, I was made aware that, uh, that, I think it was AT&amp;T was denied a site, and I think it says, yeah, site denied, over in, in that, uh, I'm, I'm gonna call it the kind of foods area, you might, locally, you might call it something different, but in that, in a, that account of foods area, um, the site was denied because it was within, uh, the height ratio of the three hundred percent to, uh, residential area, and, and if you look at the site, I'm gonna very generally say, this is not absolutely accurate, but generally, that tree line on the west side is roughly, um, the residential or, or P, PUD area that, that, uh, was, ended up res- resulting in a denial for AT&amp;T. Uh, so I, I, I knew that up, up front, so when I looked at that property, that, there's like, the majority landowner in that whole area on the south side of, of forty one, is one landowner. So I spent quite a bit of time, and, and, and we found three different sites that we fully, that we fully worked to try to get, uh, a site that would work for Verizon in this, in, in this area, and the combination of, of business terms and tenant issues over in that area did not allow us to do that, uh, work with that site, that area. So, if, if you look at all the, the sites that I'm gonna say are the blue stars, those are all the sites that I did work to try to get, come up with, a site that would work for both the landowner and, uh, Verizon, and all of those sites did not pan out. And, and during this process, early in the process, um, Anderson Communications was at this current site that we're talking about, they had a communications tower that I wanted to talk to them, and we did, I did talk to them about, um, working with them on getting, uh, working with them on getting the, um, their existing tower to maybe, to work with us on putting our equipment on, we would have to, we'd have to put up a different tower because our equipment is a little bit different than theirs, but anyway, the end result was that they, um, uh, they were gonna be relocating and dismantling the tower, so in this process of going through all the other due diligence that I did on this site, in all the other areas that you see marked as, uh, blue stars, uh, I, I found out that, that Anderson had eventually sold the property, so that's, so I went back and, and communicated with the new, current property owner to see if we could then re- resurrect the, uh, the, the tower site, so, and that's where we're, it, well, that's how we've ended up at this site, is that this wasn't existing tower site, and the new owner was willing to work with us on, on this site and the location, and it worked for Verizon, it worked for the landowner, and, and, uh, this does meet your zoning ordinance, and I would appreciate it if you would approve the site tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Um, does anybody else from your team wish to speak, or should we go over to our commissioner questions? Nobody else? Okay, so, do we have any questions from our commissioners? Anybody? Commissioner Dunn?
Uh, so, I guess my, my first question is still in, in regard to, uh, um, I guess for Mr. Stewart, um, thank you for the, the information about how you find the properties, I've, kinda along the same lines, I've still got a question about, um, some of the, I was having a hard time seeing where all the blue stars were on that map, and so I'm, I'm wondering if you exhausted all possibilities in the industrial area that's just to the, the industrial zone, that's just to the east, I'm sorry, just to the west of the hospital, um, south, the south of Washington, and then also some of the commercial areas that's, um, just to the west of the current location, um, kind of around that Hardee's area, and just wondering if, if you, you kinda explored everything there.
Yeah, so if you, if you're talking about, when you, when you start looking on, uh, Washington Avenue and going east, you folk, uh, you, you're probably more familiar that, than I am, but that's a valley, so you start going down into a valley, and the two things that, and maybe Mustafa would be better to address this, but the, the further east you go, the closer you are to, I believe it's called, it's the, um, Marquette East site that we have, and I believe that's a monopole, uh, just south of Washington Street out there, so, so you're getting, so you're, not only are you losing elevation, but you're getting closer to an existing site. Again, looking at going west, again, this is in a valley, and that valley is extending to the west, again, you're getting closer to an existing tower that we had, believe it's on a, on a water tower that we have over on the west side of this location, so, so the, the part of the problem is that this is a valley, and if you, if you put a site in a valley, and you still need to accomplish the same goals that Verizon needs, you need to increase the height of the tower. So, I, I think though, the combination of those two things eliminate going east and going west.
Anything else, Commissioner Dunn, or?
Um, yeah, just, just one more, and that is, um, if you're, you know, I, I guess I just wanna, I just wanna hear you tell me that, that this is the only site that's gonna work to provide reliable phone coverage, uh, for everyone, I guess I'm not, I, I guess, personally, for, for, my focus is on the safety of the community, and, and, you know, obviously, uh, Verizon provi- you know, plays a huge role there as far as phone communication, nine one one calls, and so, that's kinda where my head's at, I'm not, I'm not quite as concerned it, about. I'm not, I'm not quite as concerned about, you know, the bandwidth for internet coverage and whether streaming videos are going to come through quickly enough. But as far as phone coverage, is this site absolutely required?
So basically, in terms of what I would call, in my, my world, it's called due diligence. And the due diligence that I've done on this site is resulting in, this is the best site that I feel that we have available to use in this area. So I would say yes, the due diligence was done. This is the best site in this area.
Commissioner Middlefield? Oh, sorry.
Nope, that's all I had, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Middlefield?
Just to kind of follow up, I was a little confused because the name in the memo for this week was like the Marquette Golf Course or something, which was confusing. And then I remembered, wasn't there a story about Verizon tried to get access to a tower that exists on the golf course? And could you clarify that? Because that is a high elevation area, low residential, you know, area. Was that something that you looked into when doing your due diligence?
Yes, absolutely. So, so the name Marquette Golf Course, and maybe Mustafa maybe has a little more insight into this. But when they, when they do these projects, they look in a macro kind of an area. They may not necessarily know intimately what, what all the things are involved in the area in terms of the names and things. So they just look on a map and say, oh, we'll just call this site Marquette Golf.
That's correct. Yeah, it's unfortunate, when this site was named, it was given a name, basically, it's something that was at a high zoom level on a map. That's something they could put a pin on. But it's definitely not, you know, what we would call like the search ring. What we go off of is a search ring. So unfortunately, the name is kind of misleading in this situation. I believe you do, you have a copy of the search area ring, correct? Or that that's something that's been provided?
I don't think, do we have that? I don't.
No. Yeah, Mustafa, I'm sorry, no, I did not provide that. But essentially, I thought it'd be easier just to explain it. But it's essentially, the, the search area that I was given was essentially about a four or five block square on the corner of 41 in McLellan Avenue.
Right, right. Basically, that intersection, the center of that intersection is the center of our search ring. And that's where Guy, if you look at where his stars were, that's where he was clustered on, was right on that intersection. So going further south would not meet the needs of our customers in terms of traffic offload. That's too far south. I mean, if you, if you look at, if you look and see where all the businesses are, and that's what we're targeting, because that's where our traffic maps is saying where the traffic is located. That's what we're trying to cover.
Okay, that, thanks, that answers my question, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Larson?
In some of the supplemental documentation that you provided, you know, you had some examples of small, small cell, I have to find it now, some small cell structures essentially that look like they're on like light poles and, you know, things along those natures that can be in a more kind of a, they look more minimalistic, you know, than say a tower like this or something that can be placed, you know, on top of a building that, you know, may not necessarily be, constitute a new, you know, tower structure. Is there a reason something like that is not being considered? That could be considered, you know, either working with like local utilities, access to poles, access to, you know, the water, you know, water, water towers with the city that, you know, are kind of just, you know, up the, up the street on a hill at a higher elevation, things along those lines that, you know, we see happening, you know, here in communities like ours or neighboring communities, you know, with, and maybe not, maybe they're not cell structures, but maybe they're, you know, Northern Michigan University, other, other communication towers being put on buildings or water towers or small cell systems.
Sure, I can answer a few of those questions. First off, actually, we just built the site that's on the university, it's called Fair Avenue. It's on, it's on a dormitory building. So we take advantage of that structure when we can. In that situation, it was a tall enough building that was available for us to use. We also have another, we actually have two sites on the campus, on buildings. To answer your question about small cells, actually, this site is almost close to a small cell in terms of elevation. Our small cells in Chicago, for example, are roughly about a 35 foot center line. I think we're asking for, correct, what is our center line here? Guy, I want to make sure that I'm being accurate.
It's 40 foot.
Yeah, so in essence, this is very similar to a small cell in terms of the height, center line. What we're gaining from is the proxy, is the location and the way the terrain lays out. So that's, that's the added benefit. But in reality is, it mimics in many ways a small cell. In that sense, the elevation is very low, very, very low, at 40 feet. So I forget, what were some of your other questions? Water tanks? We are on a water tank. It's called Marquette, our Marquette West site is on a water tank. What we're seeing here is that we are, we are starting to see densities in this area because of the amount of traffic that we have. We need, we need higher site density to serve that traffic. So if you look at the distance, we're equidistant between two sites, or excuse me, if you look at the site that we're asking for, it's equidistant between two sites that are existing. The Marquette West site, as we call it, which is on a water tank, and the Marquette East site, which is on a monopole right off Washington Street. And if you, if you look at those two sites, you know, the distance, the distance that we're talking about between those two sites is probably a little over a mile. I can measure it out, I don't have it in front of me right now. But it's, it's very small distances. So moving to, let's say, another water tank would be out of the question in terms of serving the needs of what this site is intended to do. Because the nearest next water tank is, is way, way down to the south. So, you know, those are some of the challenges that we see here from that perspective. So I don't know if that answers all of your questions, but it looks like between the two existing sites, it's about 2.5 miles between Marquette West, which is on the water tank, and Marquette East, that we call it, which is off of Washington Street. So this site is, you know, just about in the middle between those two. And right in, you know, located within that commercial industrial area.
Commissioner Larson?
So, answer your questions or?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for going into that, I appreciate it. Another question as far as, you know, we talked, we talked about screening and so on and so forth. And it looks like, you know, there is great efforts to kind of screen that, screen the, the tower out on the golf course. Are there similar efforts that could be taken, taken, you know, with the pine tree monopole out there? Are there similar efforts that could be taken to camouflage a tower at this, at this particular location? I've seen, you know, some publications within the, some industry publications where it kind of, it's a big, a big deal kind of making sure that, you know, cell systems kind of blend in, whether they're incorporated into a building facade, whether that be, you know, a sign, a church even. I know that one's, you know, disguised as a tree. I know the site's not necessarily the best for, you know, maybe not, doesn't have all trees that would be of that particular height and things like that. But are there other efforts that could be taking place to camouflage these in an innovative way that might satisfy that neighborhood that go beyond just, you know, the fence and the, the couple of screening trees?
I guess, this is only a 40 foot tower. There was an existing higher foot tower, higher tower there already. So I don't know, I guess from my point of view, I don't know what would make sense to try to camouflage. I mean, it's, again, it's only 40 feet high. So you can, you can, I think one of the, one of your committee folks indicated last time is, you know, you could put a 40 foot building in there. So I don't know that it really does make sense at all to try to camouflage this.
So is it, is it possible to camouflage it?
What would you suggest?
Well, since you guys work in the industry, I guess I was asking, have there, are there other examples of 40 foot towers that are camouflage in some particular way?
I know you indicated a pine tree. I mean, I, I, I've got to believe that if you look at your pine tree on what would be, I believe you call it the Marquette Golf, actual golf course, that looks very obviously like a communications tower with some, you know, some lead, or not leaves, but pine, pine things on it. So I think it, it, it doesn't look natural in my, in my opinion. So I don't know what else you would want to do. You want to put a cross or something on it? I mean, it, it's only, again, it's only a 40 foot tower.
Thank you. And I guess I understand that. And I'm just looking at our, you know, at our zoning ordinance where, you know, we clearly state that configured in a way that minimizes the adverse visual impact of a tower and antenna through careful design, siding, landscape screening, and innovative camouflaging techniques. So within, within our, within our code, just reading from what that says. And that's where my questioning, my line of questioning is stemming from.
I think, I think too, this is Aaron Bailey, I think it's all based on the, the location. Since this is behind a building, it wouldn't make sense to, to stealth the tower as a pine tree or, or a palm tree.
Oh, of course.
Sense to use the tower as an industrial way because that's where this tower is located. It's in, in, it is in, in an industrial area. So if we, if we stealth it to a pine tree, that's going to be, people are going to notice that more because of the, of the location of it.
Right, but I do want to point out that sort of, and I'll get to you, Commissioner Dunn. I just, you know, the reason for the tension and the issue with this particular site is because it is adjacent to residential properties on, on two sides. So just so you understand where we're coming from.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
You know, there is, from the map you showed, you know, I can only guess that there's a great many of the other stars that Mr. Stewart showed that would have been much less controversial. So, you know, I do think that the residential proximity is really, you know, where the tension's coming from. So Commissioner Dunn, I think, did you have your?
Yeah, that was, you pretty much covered it. But I just, I just wanted to be clear that this is not an industrial zone. This is right next door to a residential zone. And in addition to that, on the sides where there is, it's residential use all the way around except for one side. So, you know, I'm looking for, and I think we're all looking for something that can, that can help us justify having these towers right next to a residential zone. When there's plenty of things in our land use code that specifically say we need to protect residential zone, residential uses from cellphone towers. So that's, I just wanted to be clear that this isn't industrial. If, if it was industrial, we wouldn't have any problem with this. We would love to see you guys put this in an industrial zone, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder, that this, this does fit into your zoning ordinance. That is why we're here. And two sides are commercial use.
That's true, two sides are commercial, two sides are residential. Do we have any other questions from our commissioners? For our applicants? Okay, then let's, you guys, if you want to go on mute, we will, we don't have any more correspondence, is that correct? Andrea, we just have people, public testimony?
Yeah, I believe two people are in the waiting room.
If you want to bring them in now, thanks. Okay, then let's, you guys, if you want to go on mute, you go.
You're gonna, you're gonna want to mute the channel 191 or YouTube, whatever you guys are hearing. And then one of you will need, can speak for this public comment.
Okay, you want me to go first?
Yes, Ms. Dawson, please state your name and address again, hi again. And
Okay.
We'd like to keep a three minute.
Thank you. Mary Dawson, 1007 West Love Street. Let me turn off my, hold on, I'm sorry. I had reverb. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. In all my research and in reaching out to friends, neighbors, residents, local realtors, bankers, and appraisers, all of whom agreed that a cell tower could negatively impact my property value and my ability to sell my home, in an odd way, that news was a little encouraging to me. But just this past Thursday, I learned from the commission that I would need expert witness testimony on the record at the hearing, which indicates property value loss. Not only was that discouraging, but unrealistic and unachievable. Why? Because as local appraisers have said, they can't provide the information because there aren't any comparables in Marquette. And why aren't there any comparables? Because there aren't any cell towers next to properties in the city, surrounding areas. As you can see from the pictures that I submitted, there aren't any homes next to or near these sites. Large commercial and industrial sites are perfect and preferred and chosen as cell tower sites for good reason. As far as the landscape goes, the revised landscape proposal doesn't do anything to help with aesthetics. First off, as was said at last month's meeting, there isn't any way to plant along the east side of the actual fence because it would block the entrance to the site. This is true. Verizon proposed adding five pine trees to the east side of the property as a good faith gesture. For the record, they aren't pine trees. But more importantly, if you look at the blueprint, you will see that they are set so far back from the entrance along the lot line that they wouldn't provide any immediate visual screening whatsoever. The further from the actual site, the less positive aesthetic influence there is. It's like if you planted a shrub directly in front of your window, you wouldn't be able to see in the house. But if you planted the shrubs on the curb, you'd have full view into that house for years to come. So in my opinion, this isn't, this is a token gesture on the part of Verizon and it doesn't address the landscape issue, not to my satisfaction. I would ask you to refer to Article 10, because this is your land development code, Landscape and Screening, 54.1001, specifically Sections A, F, and I. And I will quote, "to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public by creating an environment that is aesthetically pleasing. Two, to safeguard and enhance property values and to protect public and private investments. Three, to reduce the negative environmental effects of development while protecting the value of developed properties and surrounding areas." The word protect is used in all three of these sections. "I understand that it's your duty to protect the interest of Marquette residents while balancing the need for technological advancement. But did Verizon really prove to you the need even exist when our Verizon cell service, which I have, is excellent in this area? And even if you are convinced, is this the one and only site that they can find? Mr. Stewart did this study, I think it was, it's three years ago on these blue dot sections. I am not convinced that this is the only place in this area that they can put this because it really does affect our properties. It really seriously does. I hope you will seriously consider all the information I presented to you over the past two months, especially all the work I did on the land development code when making your decision. Even with health concerns set aside, the negative visual impact, noise, light, and intrusion into our privacy, when they maintain this would be too much of a strain on our mental health and welfare and we couldn't enjoy living here any longer. I don't want to sell my home and I don't want to move my family. I'm a longtime resident of Marquette and a law-abiding, tax-paying citizen. The basic right to enjoy my home and my property should be protected by the city of Marquette as should the rights of the entire residentially, residential neighborhood. I ask for your thoughtful consideration in making this decision. Thank you." I ask for your thoughtful consideration in making this decision. Thank you. I think my three minutes is up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, and the water tower. The water tower is on Lincoln. There is a water tower on Lincoln. I forgot. They said there was there was one, but that's there's one right on Lincoln Street. I don't know if that would work anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. Mr. Dawson?
Hi, my name is Matt Dawson, one thousand seven West Love Street. Perception's reality, whether or not there's an actual health risk issue, perception of risks, what drives a family's decision. Whether or not to purchase a home. Based on the available research, the majority of individuals, which is ninety four percent, do not want to live in a neighborhood with a cell tower. I'm pretty certain that none of you would want to live with one next door, nor would the owners of Red Electric. And all the research never once did we come across a person who purposely went out and purchased a home because there was a cell tower next door. The proposed cell tower would be within feet of our property, which is a. Multi residential zone, not an industrial zone. It'd be a hundred and forty feet from where we live, which you can see in the pictures. We want to enjoy our lives, you know, be able to let my kids play out in the yard, work in their gardens. I want to sit out on our deck without seeing this every time we walk outside. We want to open our windows and not hear constant humming from the tower. We want to be able to sleep at night without looking out the bedroom windows and seeing this monstrosity or the light from the tower, regardless of the cutoff shields. Our house is on the west side of the lot, so nearly every window on both of our floors would have a view of this tower. Think about the intrusion of our privacy when they perform maintenance, which is one to four times a month. And it's usually at night, and as they climb up that tower, they can see directly into our bedroom windows. Although the commission can't base a decision on possible health issues caused by the RF radiation. Our decision whether or not to live here is based on potential health risks to our family. We don't want to be stressed wondering if we're being exposed to serious health risks that we have no control over. My girls already lost their mother to breast cancer, so they're already. Susceptible to the cancer gene, and I'm not willing to risk their health. We need peace of mind. In our opinion, we'd be forced to make a decision to put the house and these apartments up for sale. Also, the apartments, they generate revenue for my mom, which contributes to her overall income. Will she even be able to find a buyer? You know, maybe, maybe not. And if she does, will she be forced to drop the price? And while we're waiting to sell it, what about our tenants? Will we be able to find new tenants? Will she need to drop the rent as a result of this? I ask you to consider the injustice. Why should the interest of a multi-billion dollar company and a property owner's financial gain be allowed at our expense? I understand free enterprise, but what about the right to enjoy our home, our property in our neighborhood? Doesn't the city have an obligation to protect our rights as well? The surrounding apartment buildings provide important missing middle housing options for the community, which are important tax base. I recommend Verizon plan an available alternative and less intrusive site than the proposed location. Finally, aren't we entitled to the same considerations families living in a whole residential zone neighborhood? My mom's lived in this house for thirty years. My girls and I moved back here from North Carolina in twenty eighteen after their mom passed. Shortly after my father passed away. I grew up in Marquette in this house. We love this city. And again, this is now my home. This proposed cell tower would negatively affect all of our welfare, our well being, our peace of mind. And ultimately force us to move. Please don't let this happen to our family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Okay, that where's Andrea? That concludes our public testimony, Andrea. Is that true? Yeah?
Sure. Am I allowed to respond or is this done?
Um, I think we'll probably I'm sure we'll come to you with with questions at some point. I think we need to move on to commissioner discussion at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we want to sus- does anybody want to make a motion to suspend?
I'm motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
Commissioner Dunn, Commissioner Ruiz, seconds. All in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Andres says nay. Okay, Commissioner Dunn, do you want to start us off?
Sure, um, question for Dave. In one of the the emails, I think answering some joyous questions. It made it sound like we should focus. On the standards indicated in fifty four point six four four, Section E. So the specific. Special use for towers. In there, it also mentions. Fifty four point fourteen oh three, the regular, the non-specific special use criteria. And so I I'm wondering if that. If the if the non-specific special use criteria still apply, because as I read that, it made it sound like they still do. And in addition, the the specific tower requirements as well.
I would say absolutely correct on both counts.
Okay.
The problem with the the or the. Your your challenge with the non-specific issues is to specify something. That. That you really all had, a majority of you really feel is significant.
And it's not preempted.
Right.
Okay. Okay, um, well, that being said, I've I've, you know, certainly gotten a education as we've gone through this over the last couple of weeks and. Have narrowed my objections dramatically based on the the federal laws and the state laws. And so at this point. My 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 primary objection is, I I think in general. Of the the towers being placed next to residential properties that are being used, regardless of what their zone being used as residential properties. So I am looking at. Lost my place here. Hold on for just a second. The. Under fifty four point fourteen oh three, I'm looking at the use of adjacent lands. So that's. At Section C Standards of Special Land Use Review Number Two. Use of adjacent lands and neighborhood are compatible with the proposed use. I do not believe that they are in this case. The landscaping, which is number four, I. If they weren't asking for a waiver, I wouldn't I wouldn't mention this one. But I don't. Not only does it not qualify for the parameters of getting a waiver. But if the waiver was granted, then I would have an objection here on number four. And then. Number thirteen as well, additional neighborhood factors. I don't know which way to go on this. My head tells me that. There's no doubt that this will have an impact on property values, and I think. That we we should be able to act on that. But from a legal standpoint, I don't know if we can consider that or not without. You know, without the the specific site analysis by a by an expert, although we've. Seen documentation and and heard from experts in in federal and state. Land values indicate there is the article in the in the papers there from Ms. Dawson that. Was from a gentleman that's an appraiser that was used for federal and state projects. And, you know, his expert opinion was that. That there is a detrimental effect to property values. So, you know, can we use that expert? Advice or is that is that part of the preemptions? I don't I don't know on that one. Um, I guess my only other comment. Kind of I I kind of hinted at it, but I'll give the specific documentation for it, but the. The requirements for landscaping, and this is under. The specific. Fifty four, six, four, four. Number two towers. Under item. G, the landscaping. It says under. Under number II, in locations where visual impact of the tower would be minimal, then the landscaping requirement may be reduced or waived. Obviously, the visual impact here is not minimal. At least to those. Residential properties around there. I would argue that from Washington Street, it's not going to be a minimal visual impact as well. Being up on the hill behind Outlanders there and then going up another forty feet from there, it's going to be pretty obvious. So I I don't I don't feel like the. Those standards have been met. I don't feel like the. There's any justification for a landscaping waiver, but. Yeah, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Middlefelt, did you have?
Yeah, Commissioner Dunn kind of articulated a lot of what I wanted to bring up. Dave, thank you for sending us all the MSU extension. Materials. I thought that was really helpful to help us think through some of these complex issues. And and I I agree, I came to the same conclusion that Commissioner Dunn did, that it seems like. We can't really think about the health issues. That's not that that's preempted, but the issue of property value, I think, is something that we can consider. And one thing that the MSU extension. Mentioned was that it had to have this expert testimony about a specific site. And I had the same question. It looked like Ms. Dawson did go out and get an estimate of what it would take for a formal real estate appraisal. I think it was like twelve thousand dollars or something. So. Part of me was wondering, is that realistic for us for individual to have to pay that to get? You know, numbers on what I think several commissioners are real estate people. And I think is that. Qualify for expertise? So that was one question I had maybe for Dave and Andrea is what constitute expert testimony on real estate value? Can we go with the knowledge of? Some of the commissioners who work in this field? Or does that have to be more specific? Another thing I wanted to raise was our in our community master plan, the importance of affordable housing and quality affordable housing. We are experiencing a housing shortage in Marquette, and I think. Our first and foremost priority is, you know, sticking by the land development code, making sure that's held too. But I think. In my mind, at least, there's these broader community goals that are outlined in our master plan, and it sounds like. The Dawsons are doing a great job of providing affordable housing, and I would hate to see the the degradation of the value of that property. Not only to them as a family, but also the services of affordable housing in our community. So I think. I just wanted to raise those two questions or those two points, I guess, but maybe clarification from Andrea and Dave about. The what can we consider expert testimony on real estate value, I guess?
So in the MSU extension. Letter. They publish a newsletter with various articles, basically a white paper of ten or twelve pages. The analysis of case law and legal opinions. About the affordable about the. Property value impacts, proving property value impacts states specifically that. Site-specific information is required, and they did note that. Having either an appraiser testify based on a study or. Having a mortgage banker testify based on. Their expert opinion. And and that was. The difference there is pretty dramatic. A study by an appraiser, as Commissioner Middlefelt pointed out, can be a twelve thousand dollar endeavor, apparently. Whereas a mortgage banker could come in and say, this is. You know, maybe our. We have data or we have, you know, knowledge or we have. Anecdotal evidence or whatever the mortgage banker could come in and provide. There's a big difference there, obviously. So. You're, I I think. The site-specific information is important. In that regard, though, and. You know, it's not all settled, so. Completely settled, so. I think you're in a little bit of gray area on that.
Dave, just following up on that, this. A mortgage banker appraisal, is that something that would have to be conducted by Ms. Dawson, or is that something that? The commission could request?
Well, you know, and I'm I'm not an expert in this area of law or anything, of course. I I'm just. Basically digesting and repeating what I've I've learned here and. But it seems like. It's site-specific either way. And. You know, what constitutes expert testimony was defined in that particular newsletter or that article. In those ways. I'm just saying that that's not necessarily the be all and end all to the argument. And I don't really have anything else to provide. I I've talked to our attorney about this and. That's basically his thoughts is it has to be site-specific. Information. Not just anecdotal or general kind of studies.
Commissioner Larson, did you have?
Yeah, and I know. Commissioner Dunn talked about Section E. But I still do, I still would like to bring up, you know, Section fifty four dot six, four, four. A, the very first. A, Section One, the very first piece of on wireless telecommunications facilities, says to protect residential areas and land uses. From potential adverse impacts. And so, I mean, I think, you know, it says potential, it says potential impacts. I do think that can that that could. Look at property values. We could take a look at the at the documentation that, you know, was submitted by by Ms. Ms. Dawson there as well, the research that they've done. And. That was so true that there could be an adverse potential adverse impact there. So. I do think, you know, one of the things, protect residential areas. And so I'm, I think I'm leaning towards that. If this if we didn't have, if this wasn't immediately adjacent to residential areas, this. There there wouldn't be, you know, an issue. We've taken, we've taken steps to protect other residential areas, you know, more recently by not having. By not having marijuana in mixed use, at least, you know, initially because of the bordering to residential areas. I I think this, you know, comes along those lines too. And then with with the other points that Michael, Commissioner Dunn, you brought up about. Like land uses, adjacent land uses, whether it's compatible or not. And I I don't know that it is at this point.
Commissioner Andres?
Whether it's intentional or not. I think we're a single actively focusing on one specific. Parcel or residence, in my opinion, and we got to look at the bigger picture and how. It would improve the quality of of. The cellphone signals and video signals and whatever else throughout the whole community, not not just impacting one. In. Residents that lives next door. Yes, it's it's unfortunate that they live right next door, and I sympathize with them for. You know, their issue. But I I think the Verizon folks and everyone else. Has reiterated the fact that this is the location where they. Have justified it to be, and they can't be anywhere else. So why not? Focus on the improvement of the whole community, not just the negativity of one particular residence.
Thank you, Commissioner Andres. Commissioner Ruiz?
Yeah, and to kind of piggyback off with what Mr. Andres is saying. Can someone? Confirm or deny that three years ago, there was another tower there? I'm seeing Mr. Stewart nodding his head up and down.
Dave, do you speak about that?
May I? May I speak or am I allowed to?
Well, Mr. Stu, Dave, do you know about the tower? Do you want to?
There was a tower there. I don't have any specific information about what what it was, where where it went and when it was. There was a tower there. I don't have any specific information about what, what it was, where, where, uh, it went and when it was removed, but. I think, um, that's, maybe Mr. Stewart does.
Sure, you can speak to the tower, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, you may recall when I first started this project, um, I did communicate with Anderson Communications. They did have a, a Rohan, R-O-H-N, tower on that property. And I, I was in communications and negotiations with them to, uh. Use that tower in conjunction with the equipment that we were, uh, originally going to put together. Again, they decided that they were going to relocate and dismantle that tower, so that's why, and I believe. It's not an absolute accurate statement, but I believe it was about two years ago that they dismantled that tower. So yes, there was a tower there, and it was there for quite a, a good period of time, so. Any of the other neighbors that purchased property. Probably within the last fifteen, twenty years, probably had that tower existing when they bought the property.
And, and, and so with that knowledge, you know, I really got to, you know, piggyback on what Mr. Andres is saying here, Commissioner Andres is saying, which is. You know, we do have to look at, there is a, a potential to look at the bigger picture, although I think we have got to look at the picture both big and small. Um, property values, um, you know, sight, sight, this is, uh, unsightliness. This is all stuff that was still there just a short while ago. Um, so, you know, I, I, I don't think, I, I think we've got to keep that, and that's a, a big factor. For me, when making, when looking at this decision, because it's not like we've got decades here where families have come and moved and. You know, sold and bought and grown, you know, we're looking at, at there being a tower there that was just a few years ago. And, um, you know, while maybe some of the neighboring homeowners, you know, got their expectations up that they got rid of the tower. For good, it was, it obviously looks like the intent was for, you know, at least the possibility was for this to be short-term.
Commissioner Coz?
I'm just thinking, just because something was perhaps unsightly at one point. And if improved, why would we want it to be, you know, to have an eyesore put back in that place? I don't know that that, I agree with that argument. That's all I have to say.
Joy?
Who's that? Oh, wait, uh, yes, Commissioner Primo.
Yeah, I got it. On that tower. If you leave this, all the stuff they gave you, it says that. Somebody, I can't figure out who, and I think it was the Quails. That they talked to Anderson, and that was just, uh, used for his amateur radio? That's wrong. That tower's been there because in the, I don't know, the late sixties, early seventies. We had radios in our truck that worked off Anderson Communications. And we had those in the trucks until they came out with the bag phone. Which, at that time, didn't have as good a coverage as our radios that were in the truck. So that tower was there a long time, and it was used for commercial purposes. Then the other question, or the other thing, if you ride down. The street, I believe there's. Telephone poles, which are higher than this tower almost. Some may be higher. You ride down. Fourth Street, where Light and Power ran its primary lines. You've got huge poles the same way. These are mono poles. And I. I don't know. It's, and now when they talk about property values. The property value of. A commercial building like an apartment is based on rents. It's income. Nobody's going to buy a building. For, pay any more than they can get the rents to pay it off and make a profit. You go to the bank and the banker will tell you that. You can have a multimillion-dollar building, but if your rents come in and it's worth five hundred thousand, that's all you're going to be able to borrow. So you'd have to have somebody with a lot of cash that wants to lose money to buy it. I mean, property values, and they are spite site-specific. If you went to Nigani. Your property value for the same house is way less than in Marquette. So I, I believe the tower was there, was there all those years. I, I, and besides that, we, this meets the intent of the ordinance. It meets the ordinance. When it meets the ordinance, we have to pass it, is my understanding, and we can put. Conditions on it if we want to. Another thing in there, I read it says, well, this thing's going to stick up. Almost to the top of the fence, the base. If you look at the thing, it says. Here's your elevation. I can't remember the exact elevations, but it's going to be a foot, one foot, one point two feet above the ground. Which is going to be a long way from a six-foot fence. So there's a lot of misinformation here. That's it, Joy, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Primo. Um, all right, the, I just have a couple of things I wanted to speak to. Um, I'm additionally very torn by this one, um. You know. I feel like, you know, it's hard to not acknowledge that this will have, whether it is simply perceived or, but, um. If that translates into property value changes, you know, I don't see how that doesn't fall into our consideration. The other piece that really concerns me, and if we did go ahead with approving this, I'd like to at least, in addition to several other. Conditions I would like to, you know, put on the table, um. Is that. Administratively, basically, if we are passing a forty-foot tower, they could ask for an administrative. Request to go another twenty feet if they want to co-locate. Our code encourages co-locating, so I don't think it's unreasonable to think that that might happen. So that really concerns me, and I think Ms. Dawson did a good job of advocating for herself when she pointed out that. And it specifically says that, you know, I, I'm trying to find the, the piece of code, I think it's sixty. Page six dash four three, no. Where did it go? Um. That. Once this forty-foot tower was up, they can ask for twenty more feet, um. And that you have to use the original distance separation, which was based on forty feet. So when it, if it were to go to sixty feet, it would be in violation of that three hundred percent of the height, which would be one hundred and eighty feet. However. You're not allowed to use that consideration. You're only allowed to use the forty-foot consideration. So that really kind of bothers me. I feel like it's a loophole that, um. That bothers me. In addition, there, the segment after that, and Dave, I'm trying to find, I, I had it, but now I've lost where it is. It's.
May I say something? This is, this is Aaron Valley. On your comment there, uh. Verizon is not in this business to make money off of co-locations. They're in this business to provide service. So the forty-foot, uh, height of the tower is what Verizon needs to extend their network, to grow their network. Based on the needs of, of this area. So Verizon is not looking. To find additional co-locators. They're looking to only expand their network.
I, I understand, and I'm, you know, this is not about being against Verizon expanding their network. I think everybody here is in support of that. Um, my issue is that it's, it's literally written into our code that we want to encourage co-location, that if we have a tower, we want to have. More people using that tower, so we don't have to build additional towers. So to me, if we're building a tower. You know, it's not unreasonable to think that there might be co-location in a, at a future date. Um, I, I found, I found the piece of the code that, that was, uh, it's six dash four two, um. And it speaks to height, and then it also speaks to, and I, this piece, I, I highly doubt would happen, but it also says that you could request to move it with fifty feet without having to sort of relook at. The distance locations. I realize those are both hypotheticals, but I'm also the one that brought to the table the hypothetical that you could build a forty-foot. Building, you know, at the setback line. So for me, I think it's important to think of all of these kind of hypotheticals as we're moving forward. So with that said, um. I don't think we could add a condition to say that you can't have that additional twenty-foot tower. What potentially we could do is add a condition saying that should they request additional height, that we would. We would suggest and encourage administrative, uh, the administrative staff to not approve that. I mean, so for me, that, that's really a big concern, because I don't, I don't want to see this tower going to sixty feet, being right next to a residential district. And given, given the proximity that it is to a residential district. Um, so I don't know. Uh, Commissioner Andres?
Steve, is that something that we can have administration actually proceed with doing? I mean, is that?
We could, I, I believe that it would be acceptable for us as a condition to say we would, we would. Strongly encourage that no increases in height be, uh, allowed for this tower, or no site relocations be allowed. Because it is something that they would have to approve on an administrative level, but it would not come to us again.
But just, just because we encourage it doesn't mean they can legally follow along with it. Correct me if I'm.
But it does give them, I, I'm doing this based on the fact that they were not able with the last tower on Washington Street to, um. To get them to not add that additional height, even though administratively, I don't think that was something they wanted to do, and Dave, you can interrupt me if I'm. Speaking at a, uh. Something that's not true, but.
We were preempted, we were preempted from, um. There was a, not under the same part of the code, but that also came under a preemption for existing facilities, that the additional work they did there to the. Um, ground cabinets and the towers, antennas.
But would we, what I'm suggesting, would that be something that was, uh?
I think it's a good idea what you're suggesting.
Okay. Commissioner Dunn?
I'll make this quick, um, just to, to respond to some of the things that I heard, I. My own personal belief is that this is not the only property that could satisfy the needs of Verizon and also the, the ability to provide additional coverage. Both for Verizon and the citizens of Marquette. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up is that. I think we, we need to get this right. Um, I think that, that if we are going to allow. Uh, this tower adjacent to residential uses, uh, we are setting a precedent that's going to be very difficult to go against in the future.
President already exists.
Where is that?
It was the, Wayne just said it was there sixty years, or however many years ago.
Yeah, no, I don't care what was there before. It, 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 it doesn't matter to me. What I'm talking about is, is what we do right now and what happens in the future. And again, my, my concern is that there are so many preemptions and so many federal and state laws. Uh, and for good reason. We want to encourage telecom facilities. I think that's in everybody's best interest. However, I don't think it makes sense next to a residential property. We pointed out specific parts in our code. Uh, both Commissioner Larson and myself have pointed out very specific places where it does not meet the standards. Again, I'm not going to go over them again, but, but to, to just make a blatant, blatant, a blanket statement that says that this satisfies your ordinance. I don't think is correct. We've already stated very specific points where it does not satisfy. So, um, you know, again, I just, I just want to put that point out there, um, even if we were to try and do this with some sort of condition. I think that we are setting a precedent that's going to be very difficult to go against in the future.
Commissioner Larson, did you?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I would agree, you know, I know when, despite, despite there being a tower on there, uh, in years past. You know, we went through the land development code and worked to set this up in order to protect residential areas and land uses. Uh, and so, I mean, I do think that this is trying to protect that, and it's trying to protect adjacent lands to this, this particular site on this particular issue. So I, I do think that. You know, we looked at it, and this is what we agreed on, so I, I don't think that it meets all parts of the code. It meets some parts of the code, and that's, that, that's fine, but I do think there are these specific pieces in fifty-four. Uh, fifty-four dot six four four and A and E that, that do, that do matter. And if we are, if we say that we want to protect residential areas, but we, you know, uh, from, from wireless communication facilities like this. And this is the perfect example of that with the adjacent properties. And then we go down that road, I do think that, you, you know, then the next one that comes up, so we'll say, hey, well, you did it on that site, and maybe, maybe that's where it comes in. So I, I would, I do agree with Commissioner Dunn on that, on that, on that point.
Commissioner, uh, Middlefelt?
Um, I'm prepared to make a motion and just see how the votes shake out, and if it doesn't go from there, maybe, or do we want to have more discussion on this, or?
I'd like to see a motion.
All right. After review of the site plan dated three dash five dot twenty and received three dash twenty, um, ten dash twenty, twenty. With supplemental documentation and staff renewal analysis, uh, for oh-five dash SUP dash oh-four dash twenty. The planning commission does not find that the request meets the intent and requirements of land development code sections fifty-four dot fourteen oh three. Fifty-four dot fourteen oh two. I'm going to go ahead and add fifty-four dot six forty-two. And fifty-four dot six forty-four, and hereby denies oh-four dash SUP dash oh-four dash twenty.
Um, for a point of order, uh, the case is zero four SUP zero four twenty. I think you said zero five SUP. So just want to clarify that.
Oh, sorry.
No worries. Thanks.
A nice second.
Okay, um, no, just, do we need a discussion, or do we want to just go ahead and vote?
Well, a real quick note, uh, do, do we need to get more specific than that, I guess?
I'm kind of curious about that too, Dave.
Yeah, before you vote, I think you really ought to state something, uh, out of. If there's something in one of those sections in particular, or some things that are, can be articulated specifically, that's important.
So let me just state part of section fifty-four dot six four two. Do you want me to? Do I need to restate the whole thing with more explanation?
Just stating the section itself is probably not adequate. It's not specific in sixteen. What portions of that section are you focusing on?
And then why do you feel it doesn't mean it?
Uh, specifically the point that Commissioner Larson brought up, fifty-four dot six four two. The whole purpose of having a section in the land development code on wireless communication facilities begins with. Quote, the goals of this ordinance are to, number one, A1, protect residential areas. And land uses from potential adverse impacts of towers and antennas, and number two, encourage the location of towers in non-residential areas. It doesn't even say zoning districts. It's, again, I think the purpose of this is to prevent, protect the integrity of residential areas. So I think right there, that's a very big and important part of the code. Let's see, section fifty-four dot six four four. Let me move down to there.
That was, I, I think what you just quoted was from six four four.
Oh, am I looking at an old, I might be looking at an old version of the code here. Uh-oh, yeah, I think I have the, uh, excuse me, February twenty-third document.
So, do you? Yeah, do you trust me to try and amend this?
Yes.
Good, so. I would offer an amendment. Stating that the sections of the code that we're referring to and denying. to and denying their request on is 54 point 644 A1. So that's purpose. And then number one is to protect residential areas and land uses from potential adverse impacts of towers and antennas. And also number two, encourage the location of towers in non-residential areas. And then moving on to section E, which we've got, uh, section E, number two, under the towers, subsection B, factors considered and for the special land use permits. I would point out that that section does refers back to 54 point 1403 in addition to the factors listed here. And specifically point out item III, proximity of the tower to residential structures. Obviously, they meet the, the, the actual distance requirements, but I guess in, in pointing that point out, um, I'm just referring to the, the impact on the, on the residential adjacent uses. And then III, the nature of the uses on adjacent nearby properties is the, is the main one there. And then moving on to, I've got section C, which is, now I'm lost.
Uh, section C is that off of the 54 point 1403, the special land use?
Yes, it is. Thank you. I was looking in 644 still. Yep, and that is C, number two, use of adjacent lands, that the current use of the adjacent lands and neighborhood are compatible with the proposed use. We're saying that they are not. Number four, landscaping. And number six, uh, sorry, not six, 13, um, additional neighborhood factors. And that states that other factors, uh, shall be considered as necessary to maintain property values in the neighborhood and guarantee safety, light, air, privacy to the principal uses in the district. And again, that, that states uses, not just districts. Okay. I know that was pretty convoluted, but.
This is, this is Mr. Dunn, uh, Mr. Dunn, can I ask you a question? How did you come to that resolution of it does not meet the requirements for the residents when Verizon has to build a tower to fulfill capacity?
Oh, God, I'm sorry, Mr. Valley, sorry. Um, it's not your turn to speak. You, you have to be called on. Sorry, Mr. Larson, did you have something to say?
Good.
Well, I mean, just, I think it's the same thing that Mr. Larson's going to say. It's point of order. There's a, there's standing motion. We've got to either vote it up or down. And Mr. Larson gave me the thumbs up.
Uh, Mr. S.
Everything that I said was, I guess, a convoluted amendment to, to the motion.
Yeah, I apologize. I had, um, an older version of the land use, uh, the land development code up, so I'm sorry that my numbers were a little messed up, but thank you for clarifying with the updated version of the land development code.
Dave, sorry.
Yeah, so procedurally, this is a real mess. And I have a suggestion, but first I need to go back to, I think I captured all of what Michael was referring to, Mr. Dunn was referring to in the various sections, but the last one, I didn't get the major section for, was it 1402, C2, 6 and 13?
1403, C2, number four and 13.
C2, four? I heard six.
Yep.
C2, four, six and 13?
Two, four, 13, not six.
Okay, so I have a suggestion to clean this up because, um, this is a real mess and, um.
Sorry.
I, I think it's okay. I think what would be helpful is to vote on the original amendment, which had a first and a second. Um, if that doesn't get any votes, that dies, then you can make another amendment.
The original, wait, what is the?
You mean the original motion?
The original motion.
This is an amendment to that original motion.
I, I get that it was an amendment, but it's very still, very poorly stated and it's going to be a procedural mess to unwind this.
We should kind of start over.
If this is your final motion and you have to defend it in court, it's going to be a very hard thing to unravel.
Okay.
Commissioner Rose?
Can we, no offense to, um, Commissioner Middlefelt, but I, obviously she's working from an, an old code. Can we, I, I, as long as Commissioner Middlefelt's okay with it, can we abandon her motion and have Mr. Dunn do it?
Abandon it or do we have to just vote it down?
No, you had a second, so the motion's on the table.
All right, so let's vote on it and, um, hopefully we can start over. So, uh, I'll do roll call. All in favor, um, Commissioner Larson?
No.
Commissioner Middlefelt?
No, no.
Commissioner Coes?
No.
Commissioner Dunn?
No.
Commissioner Ruiz?
No.
Commissioner Primo?
No.
And I'll vote no. Um, can I just bring one thing up to just, and you can still make your motion, but, um, you know, if, if this does go voted down, I would love it to have as much sort of strength as possible and would a request for that mortgage appraisal bolster our case?
Who's going to pay for it?
Well, is it something that could be requested? Or could the the owner of the property who's concerned request it? Or is that not an appropriate? I guess I just feel like it would, I would like our, our motion to be as strong as, as possible.
If that's a question for staff, I, I think you're beyond that point with what you've already stated, but if you wanted to go in that direction, delay a decision again, um, for the, uh, collection of some kind of our testimony by some kind of a financial expert, you don't have much more time. I don't know exactly when this application times out and it becomes automatically approved. Andrea could look at maybe the date where we go back to when was this application accepted and see where we are on the shot clock there, but these applications have to be accepted within, uh, I think it's 90 days or there, um, i- if there's not a decision rendered by the planning commission, they become, um, approved.
I don't believe we have time for whatever it's worth. The, the appraisers sometimes take two, three months.
Okay.
Joy?
Yep. Commissioner Primo?
I think that's a wrong statement there. Our appraisers right now, you can have an appraisal on a commercial piece of property and that's what we'd be appraising in about a week, two at the most.
Not the one I had six months ago. It, it, it took me several months to get them out there. But I guess, I guess it depends on who you go with.
If I'm not.
Anyway, I think we have to be a lot more specific, not just quote, you know, 54.1. What on 54.1 does this thing? I mean, why isn't a, it just, I mean, if you read the stuff Dave put out, this could have to be defended in court and I don't think you could do that. And it's also in the record that, uh, one gentleman said, well, it's not going to change his mind anyway, and that was at the last meeting. And that's, uh, I don't think a good statement to go with if you're sitting in court.
Point taken, Wayne, but, uh, I guess what I was referring to, and I said I wasn't going to change my mind, is that we weren't going to rewrite the code between that meeting and this one. The code's still the code and I didn't think it met it at the last meeting and I don't think it meets the code in this meeting.
No, I thought when we voted on something and voted no, that we didn't take it over and, uh, change the vote either. As a one individual. This thing meets the code, it should be passed.
I understand where you're coming from. I think Commissioner Dunn has presented a, well, intends to present a motion which points out portions of the code which are uh, open to interpretation.
Is Mr. Dunn going to state his motion again?
Yep, I'm, I've got a motion ready.
First answer to the timeline question?
Andrea, yes.
All right. The planning commission shall hold the public hearing, consider all requests for a special land use permit at the first or second conducted planning commission meeting. So you have to make a decision tonight.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
So what, I don't know if Wayne wanted to, to make a motion or if I should, uh, do mine, but I'm, I'm happy to go.
Commissioner Ruiz, did you have something?
I'm just wanted to encourage Mr. Dunn to make a motion.
Sounds good. So, um, I motion that after review of the site plan dated 3-5-20 and received 3-10-20 with supplemental documentation and the staff file, file review analysis for 04 SUP 0420, the planning commission finds that the, the request does not meet the intent and requirements of the land development code based on sections 54 point 1403. And that is subsection C, number two, adjacent lands. Number six, I'm sorry, scratch six, number four, landscaping. Number 13, additional neighborhood factors, specifically property values in the neighborhood. In addition, 54 point 644, section A, number one, under the purpose, number one, protecting residential areas and land uses. Number two, encouraging the location of towers in non-residential areas. And then also under 54 point 644E, Sorry for the wait. Number two towers, item B, factors considered. Just the general statement there under factors considered because that refers us to 1403, but then also item number III, the nature of uses on adjacent and nearby properties.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Ruiz, seconds. Okay, um, let's do roll call. Uh, Commissioner, is there any discussion, I should say? Or should I, let's go ahead and do roll call. Are we ready?
I'm sorry, this is your, was that discussion open to, to everyone?
No, we are, we are not open for, uh, debate at this point. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andres?
Nay.
Commissioner Coes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruiz? Where am I? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlefelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Primo?
No.
Sorry, was that a no, Wayne?
Right, no.
Uh, and I vote yes.
Jesus, what a travesty of justice.
Boy, does, the vote is five to four. So the motion is approved.
Five to three.
Five to three, sorry. And the request is denied.
Okay.
What was denied?
Request was denied.
The request for the tower, for the, for the, for the permit for the tower.
Okay, uh, moving on. Oh, I lost my agenda, hold on. Moving on to new business. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, for, for whatever it's worth, I, I hope you guys come back with, with something that's not near residential property and we can, we can approve it, no problem.
Um, okay, let's move on to new business, uh, item 11 SPR 05 2020, 933 North Lake Shore Boulevard Veterinary Clinic. Uh, Andrea?
The proposed site plan is for the construction of a two-story veterinary clinic, building, parking lot, grading and site improvements for 933 Lake Shore Boulevard. This is a site plan review. Staff has provided comments attached to the agenda packet. Was the staff review and analysis, which had the site plan review standards, the attachments submitted by the applicant with the site plan review application, narratives, lighting specs, staff comments, their response to staff comments, the area map, this new parcel is outlined in blue. Again, the block map, the parcels outlined in blue, photos of the site and the site plan. Being site plan review, uh, there is no correspondence uh, because it's not a public hearing case.
Got it. Um, is there, wait, where are we? Does the applicant want to speak on behalf of this? Is there somebody here to speak for it?
Yeah, um,
Hello?
Hello.
Hi.
Andrea, um, I, Andrew Mansfield from IDI was, I think, thinking, planning to join us. I don't know if, oh, there he is. Andrew. Uh, so, uh, yes, good evening, commissioners, uh, and thank you for the opportunity to provide comment on the site application. Uh, my name is David Nyberg. I am the landowner of record, um, for, for the site. And with me is my wife, Dr. Tracy Nyberg, who will be the business owner of record for the veterinary clinic. Uh, I just want to speak really briefly before, uh, asking Tracy if she'd like to offer some comments. The comment I generally wanted to make is that, um, the plan for this, uh, business operation has been a long, a long process and I want to emphasize that we've put a lot of thought in being intentional about making sure that this is a community-focused business, um, that blends into the neighborhood and, uh, is a good fit neighborhood, um, in which we're proposing to operate. Um, and so, um, and we've, you know, that, that's reflected. Hopefully you've been able to concur, um, in the site plan that, that's been prepared by IDI and, uh, we'll, we'll defer any technical questions to Mr. Mansfield, um, but, uh, I'd also want Tracy to make sure she can speak to the business operation briefly, um, before entertaining any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Steve. So I'm Tracy Nyberg and I would be the, the veterinarian and the business operator there. The, well, we moved here nine years ago when I graduated from Michigan State College of Veterinary Medicine and I've been practicing small animal medicine up here since then and it became a dream several years ago to find a location like this that was central in a neighborhood community that we could integrate and become a part of as a practice and, um, and then purchasing the land last year, like Dave said. Um, we've been working very hard on making a building and construction that will fit the neighborhood, um, be part of the community. Not be, um, almost look like a house more than, than a business and be able to, to welcome owners and their pets to be a small animal only, uh, practice, no boarding, um, you know, nine to five business that, that we're wanting to operate there.
Andrew, do you have any comments that you'd like to make about the site? I think it's self-explanatory, but.
Yeah, we could, uh, just to give you guys some background, uh, just to kind of piggyback off of what Andrea said at the beginning, um, it's a about a three-quarter of an acre site. Uh, so as she said, we're looking to build a two-story veterinary clinic. Uh, the building's about just under thirty-five hundred square feet, um, with that building, um, since it's currently a vacant parcel, we'll be running new utilities for both water, sewer, uh, gas, electric, um, as well. Um, so in addition to the building, uh, we have a small parking lot that has, uh, approximately fourteen provided spaces, um, zoning requires eleven, so we're covered there. Yeah, the buildings, uh, you know, it's just under twenty-six feet tall at the, the highest point of the peak, uh, to the measure point of the roof, we're only at about nineteen feet tall, so um, it, it is a, it's a two-story building, but, you know, as the Nyberg stated, it's kind of a, kind of a residential looking building, so we'll blend in nicely with the area.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for our applicants? Commissioner Mittelfelt?
I think I'm supposed to, um, I talked to Andrea, um, for, so full disclosure for other Planning Commission members, I live within three hundred feet of this proposed facility and since it's not, um, I'm not required to recuse myself, so I can ask questions, but I just, um, I also need to mention that there was ex parte communication. This is like what we're legally required to do is, um, Dr. Nyberg actually reached out to me, which I think shows how committed these guys are to trying to build community relationships and blend into the community, asking if I had questions, letting me know that this was coming. Um, so I just want to say that I had ex parte communication, um, Dr. Nyberg reached out. I, I, I totally support this. I think this is a great example and we can point to this, um, when we talk about mixed use development and how to integrate commercial uses into, uh, residential areas. I think this is a a great example of not just in the design, but also in the process, how they, they have reached out to, to neighbors. Um, I do have some questions, but I just wanted to put that out there, um, before we move on.
Okay. Do you have questions for the Nyberg's or just questions in general?
Yeah, I do, actually. Um, this came up, I was talking to a neighbor and everyone I've talked to in the neighborhood is very excited about it and excited to bring their pets closer to, um, closer to home. Uh, but they were interested in medical waste and this is just something I have no idea. I'm sure it's highly regulated, but where do medical waste go? Is that something, I guess they're not going in the dumpster on site? Is there, so what's going dumpster and?
Nope. So I mean, medical waste, if we're discussing like materials from surgery, you know, sharps are disposed, um, into a sharps container that will be picked up and, um, where all other sharps go for hazardous waste disposal, um. You know, if we're talking about euthanasias, you know, with, with bodies there, there'll be a cremation service that comes to pick up all those in the, in the plan, you'll see there's like a room that says like freezer room, so that's where all the animals will be stored before a cremation service comes to pick them up. Um, any materials from like organs, you know, from surgeries or anything like that, that's also picked up and will be taken to, to an incinerator to be, to be disposed of. And really, there's not any other like chemical waste that, that result from a veterinary practice. We're not going to be cremating animals or anything like that there. Um. Um, I mean, really feces and urine, you know, that's the only other waste where, um, you know, having having whether it's in the yard, be cleaned up on a regular basis, or, um, we have a drain system in the kennel for, for rinsing, um, out and cleaning the kennel room. So I think that's all I can think of, offhand unless you can think of something else.
No, that was mostly, the other question that a neighbor brought up was, um, uh, a space, outdoor space for animals. Are animals going to be outside for extended periods of time? I didn't see that in the drawing.
Nope. So there's no, originally they had put in a fence for the back area and I said, I don't feel there's a need for that because the animals will not be out there running around, like there's no runs outside. If there's any patients in the hospital, they'll be taken out. There is a green space in the back for, for going to the bathroom, which will be cleaned up, you know, immediately and then brought back inside. So there won't be, you know, noise. Noise is a big consideration in the, in the design process too, along with waste and, and sightliness of the, the whole surrounding area, because there is the pedestrian corridor in the back and then, you know, there's the, um, bike path in the front. So we kind of have traffic around all four edges.
Yeah, that was my next question was about, um, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of dog walkers that go from the pedestrian corridor over to bike path and they use that vacant lot as their access. Um, is, how are you guys going to feel about people walking through your parking lot? I mean, it's private property, so technically you could build a big fence and say.
I don't have, I don't have any problem unless, you know, as long as they're cleaning up, which will have like, you know, the poop bag stations for cleaning up and um, even if they're not, we're going to be cleaning it up regularly, so.
Yeah, we're not planning to build a big fence, as, as evidenced in the site plan, um, recognizing that there's, there are pedestrian corridors around the, around the property and around the site. Um, you know, there are some considerations, there'll be controlled substances as, you know, uh, inside the clinic, so we have a security apparatus to, to monitor that and make sure that that's protected, but you know, for any nefarious activity that might result from, um, from that, that transient corridor, but, um, but no, that's, that's really the only consideration that we really, we really had concerns about for the, for the design process of the building and and the surroundings itself. Recognizing that, you know, it is private property and, and, you know, we might have, you know, we might be inclined to put notices up about, um, you know, any, anybody traversing the property is assuming their risk and things of that nature, but we, um, we don't have any plans to put a block, you know, a block of fence up or anything like that.
Great, thanks.
Do you have any other questions from our Commissioners for the applicants? Commissioner Dunn?
Just one quick one. Um, are you guys planning on, uh, walking dogs across the street at all as well? Or is it, is it totally just going to be on, on your property?
We won't take any, any patients across the street. Um, you know, I, I know it is a dog friendly beach, so if somebody is waiting for their appointment and they're, they're walking or afterwards, if they want to go over there, you know, we don't really have any control of that, but no patients will be taken over by, by any employees.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? Uh, Commissioner Mittelfelt?
Well, Mike can ask his questions. I, I feel like.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Larson.
I was just going to make a motion. So if you have, if you have questions, Sarah.
I have, I mean, I'm a neighbor, so I have a lot of questions, for sure. I also know a little bit about that history of that site. I believe it was the Lake, um, Lake Shore Engine Works or something for a while, for a long time. So I was just wondering, did you, is, is there remediation you had to do, um, and when you changed the turf, which I think could actually add a lot of value, um, turning a very, you know, impervious service into swales that I saw in the design and other things, but did you have to? Is there like, does Eagle get involved with that? Is there, is it a brownfield site? Did you guys have to go through that kind of thing?
That's a great question, Sarah, and I can respond to that. Is, that actually is part of the property acquisition process. We were really, uh, we, we built into condition for the sale to, uh, for a phase one and phase two environmental, uh, for the site, um, recognizing that it is an industrial site and, um, you know, nothing alarming came up out of that, of course. Um, I am interested in the history of the site, so I, not surprising that you're familiar with it. I might be interested in learning a little bit more about it, but um, yeah, we agree that, that the site plan is, is an improvement to the property. It's currently almost entirely an impervious surface and so concerned for what, you know, water runoff in close proximity to Lake Superior. And of course, there's a lot of changes going around the coastline these days, so we we definitely intend through the site plan to be an improvement for, um, for capturing, um, you know, that, um, you know, the, the rainwater and the, and the surface water that, that flow through the, the site. So, um, there is a capture basin, Andrew, I don't know if you want to speak to that, it all about, you know, that there's a minor basin to capture, um, rain runoff on the backside.
Yeah, the basin is more for, uh, just for snow runoff, so it's an area where, you know, in the winter, when you pile all your snow up, you know, when it starts to melt in the spring, uh, we don't want that to, you know, just all run through the parking lot. So we just created a small swale there to kind of collect some of the rainwater from all the, or the, the melt from all the snow runoff. Um, yeah, as you said right now, like the existing site is like eighty-nine percent paved. Um, and so we're going down to thirty-some percent paved, so it's a significant decrease in the amount of stormwater runoff from the site into the city sewer system.
Yeah, that's great. So Andrew, maybe, so is that, I was trying to understand the different hatchings on the plans. Is that the turf restoration, is that like, is the whole existing pavement going away then and?
Yes, and we're going to take out all the existing pavement, um, and then we're going to build a small parking lot, uh, with a couple of access drives and a dumpster pad, um, on the like the northeast side of the, uh, the building. Um, yeah, and so then, uh, just to, just to regrade everything, um, and get new pavement in there and, um, get a new firm base under everything.
Can you just repeat that? You're going from eighty percent paved to what's, can you just give us those numbers again?
Give me, well, I'll. Existing, uh, here we go, pull something up real quick. Uh, so the existing site is eighty-nine and a half percent paved, uh, and our proposed site. I don't have the exact percentage. But overall, we, based on, uh, the pre-developed and post-developed, we were, we decreased the amount of runoff from, uh, the Marquette City Design Storm by about an inch of runoff over the entire site in a hundred-year design storm.
Great. No, I think that's fantastic.
One last question, do you, can you share with us a estimated timeline? One neighbor was just curious about when she could look forward to all of this.
If, if all goes as planned, um, we should be open by probably mid to late October of this year. Yeah, we've got everything lined up. We've been very thorough and slow with the process and um, just kind of waiting to, to roll everything out here and, and now is the time. Yeah.
Nice. Great.
Okay. Do we have, um, do we have any public testimony on, or anybody who wants to speak about this from the public? Andrea?
There is one person, um, in the waiting room, but that's from the previous case.
Okay.
My guess is they're wanting to speak the second public comment after this.
Okay. Um, do, does somebody either want to suspend or make a motion?
I, I'll go ahead and make a motion. So after review of the site plan and supplemental documentation, documentation dated before six twenty and the staff file review and analysis for eleven SPR zero five two zero, the Planning Commission finds substantial appliance with the city of Marquette's land development code and hereby approves the site plan as, with the following conditions, uh, that an approval of amended plan is submitted to meet staff comments.
Second.
Was that Commissioner Andres that seconded?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a second, Commissioner Andres. And I'll, I'll do a roll call. Okay, Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andres?
Yes.
Commissioner Coz?
Yes.
Commissioner Mittelfelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Primo?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks.
So what is it?
Um, okay, so Andrea, if, if somebody is, wants to address the commission on non-agenda items, you can.
Yeah, I figured we should just bring them in. I don't know. And we'll ask.
Are they here? Oh.
Oh, maybe they just stayed on the line.
Okay.
Jake, are you wanting to do public comment? Okay. Alright.
Okay, um. Planning Zoning Division report. Dave.
Was there a report in there? If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay. Anybody?
We're busy. I can tell you that.
Um, okay, doesn't sound like anybody uh, has any questions. So we can move on to commission and staff comments. Michael? I'll just go through and if anybody has anything to say.
Which Michael?
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Larson.
Uh, this is just, just aside with everything looking like it's going to be able to start opening up at limited capacity, you know, due to COVID nineteen and the governor's restrictions, I've seen in some other places where like ordinances or people are like allowing additional outdoor seating and things like that for, for restaurants. Is that something that has been discussed at the, at the city level? And I guess that's a question to staff, of course.
Can we, um, go through the comments? When you get to staff, I'll address that one.
Yep, that's my only comment.
Uh, Commissioner Andres?
Along the same lines, I was just going to ask, what is the plan to open or to extend, um, the opening of city business, uh, city buildings to the public?
Do you want to answer that later, Dave? Or, okay. Uh, Commissioner Coz?
No comment.
Commissioner Mittelfelt?
No comment.
Commissioner Dunn?
Um, just a request, I guess, and, and, uh, that would be that, uh, i- if I or anybody else on the commission happens to say something stupid, I, I don't think it benefits any of us to, to bring it up again.
I see that.
Yeah, repeat it. Anyway, thank you all for, uh, for all your work.
Thank you. Commissioner Primo?
Yeah, it's a couple of things. One, the, uh, all of Marquette is a brownfield. And the Lake Shore Iron Works or Lake Shore, whatever you want to call it, was north of that lot. That was the parking lot for the business, so it should not be too contaminated. And I believe we did a terrible misjustice on that tower. Um. So if you end up in court, and I also, I couldn't find the paper, but the, uh, is it the FCC, whoever controls those towers and, uh, said that, uh, we have no control over it, so. Uh, I don't know how many, how much of this stuff everybody read, but a lot of information. And the stuff that Dave sent out originally after the first meeting there. Um. I don't know. And I don't know the law that specifically. I just read what he sends out. So. As far as comments go, heh. I guess what we should just overlook. I mean, uh, Dave spelled out a couple of comments in his first communication, I believe. Well, some of the. about some of the things we are not supposed to be doing. So I kind of wish we had gone with the old boot camp stuff before everybody got involved. And that's it, because I can't make my point too well. I, I don't like these Zoom meetings. That's it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, hopefully, we'll be back in person soon. Commissioner Ruiz?
You know, um, I, I think I've been on the planning commission for about two years, maybe a little bit more. This one was a close call, and it was the closest call that we've had since I've been on the planning commission, I think. And good minds are going to differ. And so, you know, I think we, we, we did our job. We disagreed, and we put it to a vote. And fortunately, that's, that's the American way. You know, I think we just look ahead at, get going on to, from the business here and don't look back at, at the decision. Because it was, it was educated for sure. I mean, we, I think, this is probably the only other one that we've adjourned for a reason like this that I can, that I can, can I think of. And I think the commission, I think everybody, despite how it came out, should be able to sleep tonight, knowing that we did our job.
Thanks, Commissioner Ruiz. I, I echo all of your comments. I think that's very well stated. And that'll suffice for my comments. Do you want to, Andrea?
Nothing, sorry.
Okay, Dave?
Okay, yeah, there has been some discussion about some options that may be available at, at this point for reopening outdoor seating areas or expanding outdoor seating areas to areas where previously or is not currently allowed by code. To suspend the zoning ordinance is going to require some buy-in from our city commission, either an emergency order that allows the manager to, to do that with commission consent, something like that. But otherwise, all that could be done is for us to allow seating in outdoor areas as per code and waive fees for people. Then that, that may be part of the solution. I don't know the other parts of the, what I mentioned. I think that's something that our staff and attorneys are going to be looking into. What kind of powers are available to the city under emergency orders? Or possibly what the governor might put in the next directive she issues on the stay safe, stay home orders or. So we don't have a, a specific answer for that, except for you can't just suspend what's in your ordinance when that, a lot of that outdoor seating for commercial purposes is controlled by zoning. And the zoning is a state level, has state-level authority. So we'll stand by, and I'll let you know if there's a decision made on that. And I understand that, you know, a lot of businesses are really hurting. There's a lot of businesses. There's some businesses that may not ever reopen at this point. I think we've lost for sure two or three, but hopefully that won't, that won't occur to any more businesses. But to open the public buildings, we're still at a stage where we're, we're not sure. Sean might have some more information on that. But I, what we're, we may be reopening the public buildings on the, after the governor, the next governor's order or iteration of the current order, whatever. But please don't wish it on us that the public comes running into our buildings anytime real soon. We're, we're at fifty percent staff in the buildings now, so we're, and I, I'm not sure if that's everywhere, but we're currently three of us over here per day. And we're all staying away from each other and using PPE when we're in the same room. And trying to maintain really disciplined sanitary procedures. So it's going to be like a Petri dish when the public comes back in. And definitely a little concerned when the people start traveling again, especially as this is going, this is the big tourist destination in Michigan in the summer.
Thanks, Dave. Sean, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I could just speak to that real briefly. We're operating on a tiered plan right now for city facilities. We're on tier three at the moment. I believe our plan was to de-escalate to tier two at the, when the stay-at-home order expired on the twenty-eighth. We're currently evaluating things based on the governor's announcement yesterday. But in terms of opening the city buildings to the public, that wouldn't be until tier one. So a bit down the line still, I don't think we've quite determined how we're going to de-escalate to tier one from two. In terms of like board and committee meetings and like planning commission meetings, those will still be held over Zoom as long as tier three and tier two are in effect. So we'll make announcements as things start to open. But Zoom meetings aren't going to end in the, the very near future, at least. And city buildings won't open either.
Thank you, Sean. Um, all right, if there's nothing else, then I adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night, everyone.